March ninth to order and Lisa would you lead us in the place?
Ready, begin.
The United States of America.
All righty.
Linda roll.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi. Councilmember Hornick absent tonight. He let me know that he is dealing with a medical issue, but it is such that he felt it was better to just be absent rather than trigger either the just cause or emergency circumstances. Ability to come in by zoom. So he'll be absent this evening. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here. Any reordering of the agenda Scott?
None this evening.
Any public comments?
I have none.
I do have one speaker slip of do we want to wait till this is?
That's for that particular agenda. I go to this agenda item four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to consent counter. This will be the minutes of February twenty third, twenty twenty three, regular city council meeting. This will also be list of claims to be ratified, approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And monthly treasures report, January thirty first, twenty twenty three.
For approval.
Second, Linda.
Okay, Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
And councilmembers Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. Any presentations?
No presentations this evening and.
Public hearings.
Public hearings.
Public hearings. Councilmember comments or items anything? That you want to comment on or something that you may want to come back before the council. Lisa. I'm good. John.
I had um. A comment about we had had a complaint about the the striping and the road condition at the Marriott. And I I wanted to. Just see if if maybe we could just do that in house with the with approval of the city manager without going to. Look for it just just for safety to to mark the the striping. And if that was something we could just do or get done without going to the budget on it.
All right, I was hoping to have our city engineer here this evening to to be able to comment on this. I I don't have a problem if the council wants to. Wants to go that route right now. Restriping and McMurray is set up to occur after. Uh, the resurfacing inquiry takes place later this it'll probably be early summer when that by the time we get around to to doing that probably June. I do recognize that the the current situation, the striping on McMurray is some cause is is cause for some confusion. For drivers having been confused by it myself, particularly at night. If the the council wants us to investigate a way to go out there and and put some striping down it on a temporary basis, we can look into doing that. And if you know, if. The council consensus is such, I'll just go ahead and get that taken care of and we'll uh, report on the cost of that and.
I don't want a big, right? Like I said, not a big project. I think I think it would be within.
It could be done.
To just go put a stripe down the middle so you know which side.
It could be done with with paint. It could be done with with temporary reflecting markers, that sort of thing. I'll talk.
Wait two years for the.
Yeah.
For the contract or the the. You know, until it's part of a deal, but that's just.
I think for safety sake, that might be prudent on our part for traffic safety.
Okay, so before we get, you know, into Brown Act discussion, I think there. At least two council members are interested in you moving forward. So I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, written communications?
None this evening.
Uh, committee reports. Anyone went to a committee meeting? David.
I had a meeting with the CCWA and they that kind of an emergency meeting to get some water trading done. So. With the the water availability, we're trading water with the Irvine Water Company stuff. So they had a special meeting. So it was just a short. And it went smooth and everything is running well. Happy to say that we have water to to wheel and deal with now. Thank you.
And yesterday I had a North County Regional SB CAG meeting. Most of the discussion was about the. Multimodal projects are going on in the south end such as the Santa Claus Lane land. What do they call that? Streetscape. There you go. Streetscaping and uh. Several million dollars, but they want to move forward with that because Santa Claus Lane, if you've been down there, pretty. Pretty much needs it. And there's also going to be funding additionally for the freeway projects and such, especially at the Darrow Lane. Okay, uh, let us move on to business items. Let's move on to business item number four, discussion and direction for funding. For the Buellton Senior Center. And would you like to have Pam speak on this first?
Uh, let's have a report by our finance director first.
Let's do that.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, at the last meeting, Pam Nico, CEO of the Buellston Senior Center. Spoke to city council, bringing back a funding request, which would be in advance to fund their cash flow. Issues at the moment. And. In March of twenty twenty two, city council authorized an advancement from fiscal year twenty two, twenty three budget. And the amount of seventy thousand or yeah, seventy thousand, two hundred, three dollars. Um, again, this year, the senior center is coming. For a request for an advanced funding. However, there is no current budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. So we are proposing funding in the same amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Uh, when we do prepare the budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, an appropriate amount will be budgeted at that time. Um, this additional funding that's being asked tonight will be. Will require a budget amendment to the fiscal year, current fiscal year of two thousand, twenty two, twenty three. And staff recommends that the city council discuss and provide potential funding options for the senior center. And approve a budget amendment to fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. And I may answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions also for staff?
Um, I did have a question on when you say that you're for addition, when you're saying to identify locations for additional funding, or is that asking us to not only? To like suggest where the funding should come from? No? Okay, perfect.
John?
Well, I think it's this is what we did before. It's already been done. Was there any problem last time? We just smoothed. Change and thank you.
And I will go to the public for comment. I do have one. Comment from Pam Nico.
Mayor King, council members, thank you. My name's Pam Nico. I'm the CEO of San Inez Valley Community Outreach. And I want to clarify just a little bit for the city council, since you fund us, why I'm a CEO. The reason why is because if you are a CEO of a nonprofit, you can exempt yourself out of. Workman's compensation. So it took our workman's compensation down sixty two hundred dollars if I opted out, which was a huge savings for us. So that is why the title went from director to CEO. So we that so we could do that to save that money. I just want to clear that up. Um, thank you so much for um, for thinking about this and considering it for us. I just, I mean, the city of Buellton has always been such a supporter of ours and we love working with you. I wanted to just kind of give you guys so. The council so that you know what you do in the city of Buellton. So because we did turn ourselves over to San Inez Valley Community Outreach, it never changed. From the Buellton Senior Center, I'm pretty sure it never will. Um, and that our our main focus is in Buellton. So I want to tell you that we um. We've had to do a lot more record keeping um, since last year because we now are recipients of the USDA. So if anyone is interested, here is every single person that receives any of our free food or whatever from the from. The center. And right now we have documented eight hundred and twenty five clients. That's a lot for a small building. Um, we serve. Four hundred and nine meals a day, three, three hundred and twenty eight of them are in Buellton. Last year we serviced fourteen domestic violence, thirteen were in Buellton, one was in San Inez. We have eighty three veterans, seventy two of them are on the Meals on Wheels in the Buellton program. And our senior bag program, which if you ever tried to drive on Monday, please don't. You'll never get through. Um, we're doing two hundred and ten bags. Six of those bags go to Lompoc, twenty one go to solving and a hundred and eighty three go to. Buellton. And before during today, because we were on K E Y T news on Monday because. The CalFresh, they're chain, they're, they are reducing their funding. They're taking away the pre. Pre-COVID extra money that they were giving for CalFresh recipients. They're taking it away. Um, I called the Joan Hartman's office and talked to Gina, see if she could get us some mid county statistics. She said that she'll give us a little bit more information on that, but basically for. People in Buellton who are on CalFresh, which was formerly food stamps, if you know, um, it'll take about a hundred and eighty three dollars away monthly. But on a yearly basis in mid county will take about seven hundred and ninety five thousand dollars out of the food spending. And so K E Y came at K E Y T came and did an interview with some of our seniors and us. We weren't prepared. Um, on what that was going to mean. And it's devastating. If you take a hundred and eighty three dollars away from a nine hundred dollar a month paycheck. We're talking about some serious food shortage. So um, so in thinking of these things, I. Went to the food bank, which is our major source of food for our senior center besides what we buy for the Meals on Wheels, but the free, the reason why we can do produce. From January last year to January of this year. The food bank has delivered to us one million, six hundred, thirty seven pounds of food, eight hundred and ninety. And for that, we paid forty two thousand dollars. So I think that we're doing. A huge service here in Buellton, you guys that have helped us to help just bridge that gap for everyone who has any food insecurities here. So um, I want to give you guys that information because I think it's important just to know how much that we're doing because it's almost inconceivable. That we can do that much here.
Yeah, it's fantastic. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from council?
The um, hundred and eighty three dollar reduction is that per person on?
Per person, per family.
Family.
Perfect.
And then how many families are?
So I, as I told, as I told Scott, we're trying to find out exactly how many families. So Gina at Joan Hartman's office is trying to get us that information. It came up so fast that but the last, the last distribution of that check is March thirtieth. So it's going to impact April first. Um, if they, you know, they use their debit card and they think it's going to be on there and it's not going to be there. So. Um, it is gonna, it is gonna make a big impact. So hopefully we'll be having some meetings on that, figuring out how we can best help. Um, I just want to know how many people in Buellton that it's going to affect so that we can maybe get a better handle on it. And particularly how many? Families with children it's going to affect as well.
And that money comes from the county or the state?
The state.
State and the state just. Reduced.
Yes, sir.
Just like that.
Yes, sir.
Well, hopefully we can find some funding for that.
Right.
So. May may I ask how many, how many people in Buellton are serviced? May, may I ask how many, how many people in Bilton are serviced by the senior center? I'm sorry, the San Inez?
Yes, well, we had, it's hard to, it's hard to kind of tell just because, but we have eight hundred and twenty-five documented. People that are coming in.
From, from the Bilton area?
The Bilton area. It's hard to tell because of our free farmers market, so I've tried it all kinds of ways, like when, you know, we've had, we've hired counters be there, but then. When we go home, so I put in a video camera and then I was sitting there like counting each, and then I just gave up. There's a lot of counting, I can't watch it every night.
Any other questions for Pam? All right, I'll bring them back to council for possible action.
I would make a motion to. Continue or do the funding early, like we were talking about whatever the request.
Sorry, may I ask, just for comments in this area before, I was just wondering, um, do we have the ability, I mean. As if they're servicing, servicing eight hundred and twenty residents in Bilton, and at our funding at seventy thousand, two oh three, that's roughly about. Eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents for investing per person being serviced. And we consider that, we know that last year if it was seventy thousand, and you would roughly say, um, inflation's at like five or six percent. To even maintain from a buying power standpoint, would we not, would we be open to discussing increasing the funding to keep that going for them? And knowing that now you've got a CalFresh element that could create a gap that we aren't even aware of, it might be who of us to discuss that if anyone's willing to talk about it.
My only concern is. If I understand Chanel correctly, we haven't got to a point where we've set up a budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, the budget for this year. We're asking for an amendment, so we would in effect be upping the budget for this year, but the time to discuss. Upping their funding in general would be when we talk about the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, is that?
That is correct, yes.
And when, when are we scheduled to have the twenty-three, twenty-four budget discussion?
It's going to be, um, in May.
Okay.
First meeting in May, probably.
So that would be when we would talk about increasing our overall funding, because if I understand correctly, and I might be wrong, the seventy doesn't. It is not inclusive of everything, that, that's not the amount that we give, that, correct, it's just, and, um. And, um, an advance of the total budget, so press for a better conversation as to what we give them in total. And what we would want to increase it, we'd need to know the total budget, which is not what we have in front of us.
Okay, so the only option we can do is just continue on with the funding.
This is basically to tie them over till they, till we do.
You can, you can do whatever you'd like, you're making a budget adjustment here, so you could set the number wherever the council feels is appropriate. But I, I think the, the point is well taken, what's going on here is we're adjusting the budget for this year. We will, uh, set a budget for next year and the following fiscal year as part of our two-year budget cycle discussion in May. And then what we'll do is, as, uh, we'll probably have a discussion with the, with the, the senior center and find out. What would be the best time from a cash flow perspective from their standpoint? To actually fund them, whether it be at the beginning of the fiscal year or in March of next year.
Okay.
Uh, but this, this is a, essentially it's a one-time adjustment. To this fiscal year as opposed to an advance on the following fiscal year, which was what we did last year.
Gotcha, okay. Chanel, what's our, what's our total, um, contribution? This is not, this twenty thousand is not our total contribution, correct?
For this current fiscal year?
Yes, this is just an advance on what our, our overall funding.
To this year, right?
No, it's to increase, because we already paid them seventy thousand, two oh three back in March, and that was the advance. And that was the amount budgeted for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, so they were asking for another, for another advance. For a budget that did not exist, so our solution was, um, we'll grant them the funding for the same amount. Be budgeted for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to help them bridge that, uh, gap that they're currently facing. And when we do the budget preparation for the following two, um, fiscal years, we'll sit down with them, figure out what's. What's the funding amount that they need and what is the timing of that funding that they need? So every year, so that way every year you don't come asking for that advance, if that makes sense.
Absolutely, uh, motion?
I'll second. Oh, did you, you said you had a motion, right?
Yeah, John made the motion.
Yeah, I'll second, sorry, misunderstood.
Okay, Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's move on to number five, which is discussion of possible direction regarding code revisions for appeals of land use decisions. And lead on, this is going to be our attorney, Greg Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I hope to keep this, this brief, um, in reviewing the, uh, city of Bilton zoning code and reviewing. Um, some recent projects, it came to our attention that, uh, the zoning code has an older. Or sort of antiquated appeal, uh, provision, and that says that, uh, an appeal can be made by the applicant. Or any interested person who is adversely affected by the decision of the planning commission. That's the only way that a planning commission decision can get to you, um, in a, a recent, uh. Not even recent, but within the last ten years decision out of the city of Newport Beach, uh, the judge looked at. The Newport Beach code and said, well, if you're an interested person who's adversely affected by a decision, then you can't be a disinterested person and hear. Uh, the appeal, which would mean that any of the five of you could not appeal a matter. That you thought was important for council to hear, and then be part of the appeal hearing, you'd have to sit in the audience and couldn't vote. Uh, so, uh, what we're, what we brought to you is four different kind of, uh, for appeal and review procedures that are out there. Uh, I will say that my, my recommendation to you, um, and my request to you is that you give me direction. Tonight to move forward with a bit of a hybrid of number one and number two. Uh, number one from Santa Clarita says that any discretionary application can be certified for review. Um, that means at any point in the process, uh, it can be taken from the commission and moved to the city council. Uh, number two, Temple Cities says that any decision made by the planning commission can be brought to the council. By a council member, by the city manager, or the city attorney, I, I like that. Because it lets Scott or me, in our professional opinion, bring something to you, it doesn't mean that, you know, we don't, we don't have to ask one of you to do it, we can just. Uh, move it forward, um, but I, I would like to be able to do it. Earlier in the process instead of waiting for the commission to make a decision, because sometimes there's a, a planning project before your commission that. Has implications that really the five of you should be the ones weighing in on as the first people to hear it. Um, but what's important under Temple Cities and, and Santa Claritas is that there's not a statement of reasons. Um, you, you're not opposing or supporting the application, a- as it says in Temple Cities, you just believe that. The matter is of such importance or significance that the decision should be made by you, the council, as a matter of policy. Uh, so what I'm asking tonight is that you give me direction to bring that to you so that we can update your code, and in the future when. Some of the larger or more important development projects are coming through, uh, if it's something that Scott, myself, or any of the five of you think should be handled by you. Rather than, than the planning commission, we have a nice, easy process to do that, that, uh, doesn't cause any of the five of you to have to recuse yourselves. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but hopefully that makes it clear, uh, what, what direction I'm seeking.
Any questions of staff from council? David? John?
Just a comment, it, it seems now we, the planning commission, I've always thought it was funny that the planning commission has to make all these decisions and. We're sitting the, with the final say, but. The, the planning commissioner is an elective officials, are making decisions that are coming, um, to us, so that's. That's, I always thought that was odd, and, uh, if that's what I, if that's the same perception, I, I agree with the going forward with, uh. In the recommended.
Right, and, and I did talk to Greg about this, and I, I, I think it is a good idea because there are some projects that come before us. That, you know, ultimately, it's, we're going to get the flag for it from the community, and so if it is something that's very significant, I think that. Uh, it's not necessarily bypassing planning, but it's just going to come before us because, you know, we're going to take the heat of. If this is a project that the community is opposed to, so I think that this is a good idea. Um, anything from the public, Linda?
No, nothing.
All right, back to council for direction.
So, I mean, I, it seems like it makes sense to, I, I don't know how to basically, I'm of the, of, of meaning that what he mapped out with it for, um. Having a blend of Santa Clarita and Temple City, because I agree, I do think that from the capacity for you and Scott to be able to bring these to our attention would be great as well. But I do agree that how do, I don't know exactly how you would word a motion where it is taking the at any time.
I, I don't know, yeah, direction's fine, yeah, thank you.
That direction sounded great, what you were just saying.
I second that.
Yeah, I second the direction.
Great. Anything, John? So, John?
No, I, I just, uh, I, I agree with the, that concept.
Yeah, I do too, and, and we'll direct staff to bring us back something that we can, um, codify.
Great, so it's, it'll be an amendment to the zoning code, so we'll work it up as quickly as we can. Uh, get it as a, uh, public hearing before the planning commission, so they can make a recommendation on it, and then we'll get it to you as, as quickly as possible. So that we're, we're a little bit more up to, up to date, thank you, thank you all.
So we have direction for staff on that one, and we will move on to number six, this will be, uh, review of annual comprehensive financial report. ACFR for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and the lead on this is going to be Director Chanel Zamora.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, staff is pleased to present you its annual comprehensive financial report. Also known as the ACFA, and this is for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one, third, June thirtieth, twenty-two. The city is required to present a basic fin, basic annual financial statement report. But the city elects to prepare the ACFA to provide counsel in the community. About the city's financial condition in a more, um, depth manner, uh, since its preparation, staff has submitted. Uh, the ACFA to the GFOA for an award and has won nine consecutive awards. We have submitted this ACFA for consideration in the excellence in financial reporting. Uh, the determination usually lasts six to nine months, um, so we're hoping we get our tenth award this, or this particular ACFA. And the ACFA is divided into three sections, the first section, the introduction, provides background information about the city. The financial system, which is the bulk of the ACFA, includes the management discussion and analysis, which is basically. Um, the summary of all the financial statements and explanation of changes in the financials from the prior year. And the, the fund financial statements are also included along with the notes to the financial statements. And includes the independent auditor's report. The third part is the statistical section, it presents up to ten years of unaudited statistical cities' financial trends. In order to help gain an understanding whether the city's financial health has been improving or declining over time. The financial statements are prepared based on the general accepted accounting principles GAAP. And as issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASP. Um, uh, the city contracts with Moss, Levy and Hart, Hartside, which have performed the audit on the financial statements. The auditors have expressed an opinion that the city's financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Are first fairly stated in confer, conformity with GAAP. Um, so with that, staff recommends that the city council review and file the ACFA for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-two. I am now open to answer any questions, and we also have our auditor, Adam Geis, uh, online, and he's also available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, any question? Counselor.
No question, just a comment, good job, the report is always nice and easy to read.
Thank you, I try my best, I know there's a lot of information, um, but try to keep it simple as well.
No, it was a thrilling page-turner, I really appreciate it, so thank you for everything you did.
John?
Yeah, that was a, it's fun to tell anybody that I have to go over a hundred and ninety-seven pages, right? It sounds smart, but you know, thank you, right, and you did a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, good job, uh, Chanel, and fortunately, uh, most everything is on the rise, uh, in this report, and. Comprehensive was an understatement. Um, anything from the public?
No, no comments.
Okay, I, and this is just going to be an accept, s- accept and file.
Even file.
Okay. Okay, now, we don't need a motion to accept that, correct? No, it's just an accept, okay, um, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just two items briefly for you, as you're all aware by now. Uh, we have another storm system coming through in the next day or so here. Uh, it's expected to last a couple of days, and then we will see another storm system come early next week as well. Um, it doesn't look like the rain we're going to receive this time is anywhere near what we did in our previous storms, however, uh. To ensure that, that, um, we have, uh, safe conditions all the way around. Uh, Bradbury Dam at Lake Kachuma has begun releasing water, uh, it's a fairly small release, at this point, they don't expect the release to exceed. Five thousand cubic feet per second, uh, uh, something to compare it to, they were releasing almost twenty-five thousand cubic feet per second last, when. When, uh, the river level reached the dam, so we don't expect a whole lot of water, there's a lot of water in the river, but it's not. Uh, flooding stage like we saw here previously, uh, but we would advise everyone to stay out of the riverbed for the next several days. Because the water, uh, will be being released, we will be seeing water coming in, uh, just from the rainfall. And you just never know when they just, when they might decide they need to really increase the, the outflow from the dam, so best to just stay out of the riverbed for now. Um, and then, uh, the other item I have for you this evening is just kind of a heads up, uh, we will have an item on the next agenda, there will be a resolution. And an agreement, um, to join the, let me get, see if I can get this right, the California statewide community development authority. Which is a joint powers authority, and, uh, the purpose of this authority is to assist in the, uh, the financing. Of certain types of projects, in particular affordable housing types of projects, so there's, uh, this is simply a, um, a joint powers authority. That the city needs to join in order for, uh, certain types of funding to be available for our projects that are occurring in our city here. We haven't, we have several of them right now that are, that are in the pipeline, that are looking for this funding. And, uh, this will be critical for all of them, so the first step will be this resolution and, uh, agreement at the next meeting. And then the following meeting will have a noticed public hearing to actually adopt a resolution. Um, authorizing the granting of, of, uh, bond funds for this particular project, um. So if you have any questions, please give me a call, we can talk about this offline, but I did want to let you know upfront that this is coming, so. If you have any questions or concerns, we can discuss that in the next week or two, right, with that, I'll conclude my report.
Yes, just one question on the, the river release?
Sure.
Um, what is the process for, is it, is it through law enforcement that handles the notification for any kind of encampment? You know, for any people who might be residing in the river, is that there?
Yes, the sheriff's department, when, uh, when releases are anticipated, the sheriff's department will send either units on the ground. Or aerial units, uh, to notify encampments or people that might be in the riverbed to seek higher ground, and they will do that. Usually a day or so ahead of time, so in certain areas of the city, before rainstorms, you will hear the helicopter fly by, and you'll actually hear them making the announcements. But that's, that's pretty typical, and it's done every time they, uh, uh, that a storm is expected that could cause a rise in the river level.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank you for the updates on the dam, the one day it was four thousand cubic feet per second, then it was six thousand, then it was ten thousand.
Yeah, it was twenty.
And just going up, and I was like, wow, you know, they're breaking it up, and I think, when did it get to a hundred, two hundred, twenty-five?
Twenty-five thousand.
Second, which is a lot, and anyway, I appreciate having those updates because.
Yeah, so did I, so I was real happy to get that, I was getting that from, uh, emergency operations and then from Bureau of Reclamation as well, so I'll pass that one.
And if you've noticed, the, the, the water's a lot clearer now, it's kind of nice.
Mm-hmm, right.
It's a, yeah, thank you.
And fortunately, I, I cross the river quite often, unfortunately, I have not seen any raps or surfboarders.
That could be just a new idea, I could.
Okay, anything for more attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss three items, uh, first, under government code five four nine five seven. Uh, a performance evaluation of the city manager, second, under five four nine five six point nine D four, one item of potential initiation of litigation. And finally, under five four nine five six point nine D one, one item of existing litigation, which is city of Bilton versus oil company. Thank you very much.